Is open to the public and a warm welcome to all of you in attendance. My name is councillor Brian Holmshire and I am the Chair of the Central Local Area Committee. We're going to start with a couple of thank yous, so I'd like to thank all of you for giving up your evening and coming here to join us today. And also thank you to Vicky and to the team at St Mary's for hosting us. And I think I think just through the door. We're going to be handing out question slips for anyone to write questions and hand them to a member of staff. This this will happen after the breakout discussion, so the the slips have gone out already, but we'll be answering questions after the breakout discussions, which will form around forty minutes usually of our sessions. And we may give a little extra time to those public questions as well this time to make sure it's there. Okay, so over to Claire for the housekeeping here. And then I will introduce people around the table.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please, can I request that everyone to switch their electric devices to silent mode so to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The centre point is out at the front of the onto the main road and the toilet facilities are straight through past the refreshments and down the corridor. Meeting stays open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Members of the public are permitted to take photos and to film or audio record the meeting in accordance with the protocol for webcasting, filming and recording of Sheffield City Council meetings. If anyone wishes to film or record this meeting, please make yourself known now. Thank you. Asner has put the hand up. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thank you. So can I ask that members and officers around the table, but also on the first rows will introduce themselves? Because we have some councillors on the first rows here. So shall we start at this end? Is that okay?
Councillor Malacay Hebe for Broomhill and Sharrow Vale.
Henry Nottage for Hillsborough Ward.
Christine Gilligan-Cubo for Hillsborough Ward.
Councillor Toby Mallinson for Hillsborough Ward.
Hi, everybody. My name's Tom Hunt. I'm one of the councillors for Walkley Ward.
Hi, I'm Don Wright, councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, everyone. I'm Norm Maclean and I'm councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, everyone. I'm Adeel Zaman and I'm the Community Services Manager for Central.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So before we proceed with the agenda, I'm going to explain how the meeting will work. We were going to deal with some formal business to start with, and then we're going to move on to the Central Local Area Committee Budget Report, which we do once a year. Adeel, next to me, will give a verbal update on the Central LAC spend report, and members of the committee will be asked to agree and note the recommendations of the report. We're then going to have an update on the agenda. And I think a key element today will be our group discussion work. So we have what are called feedback tables, and there are three feedback tables, two in this room and one in a separate room, which I will explain about later. And then, after that, we will be able to get feedback from those tables in this room, and we will move on to public questions. The next item I've got is apologies for absence. So do we have any apologies for absence, Claire?
Just got apologies from Ruth Merserow, councillor Ruth Merserow, and councillors Douglas Johnson, Angela Argento. It could be a little late. Thank you.
Right, thank you. One of the standard things that we're asked is whether there's any exclusion of the press and public. Well, there are no items that require the exclusion of press and public. So that's that's over with. Again, a standard item on on all these agendas for Central LAC and other LACs is a declaration of interest. So do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? So please do say so if you do. Okay, no response to that, so that's good. Right. Item five. So this is where I'm going to hand over to Adeel Zaman to give a short update on the Central LAC spend. That's the budget report. Okay?
Hi, everyone. I'm the Community Services Manager. Thank you all for joining us. So in regards to the spend report, each local area committee has a hundred thousand pounds to address local priorities in the community plan. In this report, it sets out decisions on budget expenditure that has taken place in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. There's various grants and projects that have been funded by the local councillors. For example, in the Broomhill and Sharrow Vale Ward, we funded forty Christmas trees. In Hillsborough, there was the Midsummer Festival that will take place in June. And recently, we had the Wind Gardens Community Fun Day. Yesterday, we had VE Day activities to mark the eightieth anniversary of Victory in Europe. In the City Ward, there was a lantern festival in Kellum Island. And in the Walkley Ward, councillors have funded the Zest Garden Park Roundhouse Fun Day that took place a few weeks ago, and Jamaican Independence Day celebrations. There's more of a detailed breakdown in Appendix One. Also, towards the back of the room, there are some pictures and photographs from the events that we've funded. In regards to today's report, there are three recommendations for the Central Local Area Committee to note the expenditure against a hundred thousand pounds for last year's budget. There's also to agree the remaining funds of seven thousand five hundred and eighty seven for the Walkley Ward, which will continue to be used to address priorities in the community plan. And the final recommendation is to agree the spend breakdown of a hundred thousand pounds for twenty twenty five, twenty six, to address the local priorities. Previously, we've agreed to split the hundred thousand pounds, twenty five thousand pounds equally per ward, and that's the recommendation to the councillors. Thank you.
So thank you for the recommendation there. So is that agreed by the members of the Central LAC, the councillors? So is that agreed? That's that's great. A show of hands? Okay, we'll do a show of hands. That's the formal way to do it. Thank you. So that's formal business, which we don't do every time, but needs to be done at least once a year. So item six, and we're on to a presentation. So the subject matter for today is about public transport. And we have a presentation from Ian Smith, the Assistant Director of Bus Reform from South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority, who are now responsible for the the public transport in South Yorkshire. So over to Ian, if you can stick to about ten minutes. Sorry, is it is it Ian, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. I met Nathan earlier. Have not met yourself. Yep. So if you stick to about ten minutes, Ian, that'd be great. All right. Okay.
Excellent. Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. Thank you for having us today. What I really wanted to just do was come back, provide an update in terms of what we've gone with our bus consultation over the course of the last few months and provide an update. And again, just really run through what's next and really start to share with you in terms of what the timelines are in terms of, obviously, the bus consultation and making franchise live across South Yorkshire. So in terms of the consultation, we had a statutory consultation that ran from late October last year through until January on this year. We hosted two questionnaires, essentially a ten question questionnaire to begin with, that went to members of the public, and then a larger thirty one question version led up to a lot of core stakeholders. In terms of response, nearly eight thousand responses back to the consultation. At the same time, SimCA undertook a significant amount of advertising and driving awareness, poster campaigns, quite a lot of like poster sites on site of buses, et cetera, and really targeting a social media campaign. We held a number of public events throughout the region, so across all the localities, predominantly looking at transport interchanges, universities, higher education establishments. And again, we also went into a number of community hubs to basically try and get the consultation out as far as we possibly could. Again, just to highlight some of the various locations we went to. And again, the consultation, the important part here was really getting people's views, really engaging in the process during that, the twelve week consultation, just to understand what people's views and how that starts to shape our direction and moving forwards. So again, just a couple of examples there of where we did so. So I guess importantly, what I'm here today to show you are the results of what actually came out. So overall support, and again, ultimately, the question here was overall, to what extent do you support or oppose the introduction of a pro franchising scheme? Support absolutely in a majority of eighty seven percent, as you can see from the illustration there, with five percent showing opposition to the process to move forward. So again, really important that we got that support across. So where that led us to, as we went through, the mayor, you know, together, made the decision to proceed with bus franchising. That decision was taken the eighteenth of March, so again, very, very recently. So again, important that we come out to actually, you know, share that with you. And again, what we're now doing, and again, one of the reasons I've been brought into role is how we now start to progress that scheme. And again, just like to spend probably about five minutes just to talk you through what that scheme looks like and what we do in terms of next steps and process. Just again, as a little bit of background, it's really important just to understand what the trends are in travel in South Yorkshire. I think it goes without saying, buses are still the most widely used form of public transport. That accounts for around thirty percent of all our journeys. But what we've really seen in South Yorkshire is that steady decline of bus usage, particularly exacerbated as a result of Covid. But again, you know, really seeing, you can see the structure that we've had there. And I think, you know, whilst that trend, yeah, it is not unique to South Yorkshire. It is more pronounced in South Yorkshire. And again, you know, we can have great conversations around the reasons behind that, what's caused it. But ultimately, you know, we want to be in a position where we have a far more attractive public transport system. And again, you know, if we didn't do anything, so if we almost left, you know, the situation as it is, services operated broadly by commercial operators, we'd just continue to see potentially that decline. And, you know, ultimately, a number of services that don't become viable for operators to continue to service. So again, just a little bit of scene setting. So the scheme itself, going into detail here, I say it was approved by Mayor Copard on the eighteenth of March. I think probably one of the key dates there, just in the top right hand corner, the first date where services will begin is now committed as the fifth of September twenty twenty seven. But again, I'll talk a little bit more behind that with local contracts, first award going through early in January twenty seven. I think the key highlights of the scheme, and again, I'm not going to go into nth level of detail there, but to give you a flavour of it. We have now got approval to provide facilities within the area that operate. So SimCA will be providing depots fleet to operate. And again, what we'll then look at doing is there are some services that may not be, you know, may not be included in the scheme, particularly where we have services that come from outside of our boundary. For example, ethnic communities from Derbyshire, things that potentially come from Nottinghamshire to the south of the region. Again, how do they work? And again, you know, there are ways in which we'll permit those services, but again, incorporate that within the scheme. And I think also importantly, I don't know if anybody's aware of this, but we have currently an enhanced partnership scheme that operates between bus operators currently serving the region, local authority and SimCA. That will be revoked as we go through the franchising scheme. And again, I think what's really, really important now, and you know, I'm new into role, I'm into week two at SimCA, so, you know, learning very, very fast. But I think what we'll now need to get to, we've had that decision, the decision was taken the eighteenth of March. Now it's all about the consultation. What do we actually do? As we can start to share more detail, but also importantly, you know, talking to the communities that we serve. What do you want from your services, from your bus services? How do you move those moving forward? And again, first services will start to run in September twenty twenty seven. That was the first tranche that we'll take. And again, not just similar to what other combined authorities have done, we'll do it in slightly phases over the course of, you know, a three year period, as indication right now. Again, I won't run through this in any great detail, but again, just to give you some headlines in terms of, you know, what are the combined authority subjects for the network? And again, you know, I think you'll see on there, had this been a commercial operator, it would be very, very different. But ultimately, it has to be affordable. The model has to be affordable. It has to deliver value for money for the region. You know, ultimately, we want to increase passenger demand. We want to provide services, you know, that we do increase passenger numbers. We absolutely have to. We get, you know, there are a number of things we have to get right in that process. What do people want, number one, a reliable, a punctual service? But ultimately, in terms of driving passenger demand is where we go to. The model, the franchising model, it will increase connectivity, you know, the areas that we cover. We absolutely acknowledge that has to be key to our objectives. Punctuality, reliability, we've touched on already. And again, you know, what we want to try and do is enable a position where, you know, market conditions such that we can encourage new operators to potentially operate some of these services for us. You know, we become much more attached to the market. Super, super important in terms of environmental sustainability. Where do we go in terms of our decarbonisation journey? What do we do in terms of, you know, electrifying fleet? And, you know, how does that work over the course as we go through this transition through into franchising? And I think, you know, really, really important then, you know, how do we support the most vulnerable? How do we support those people that simply have our services? You know, it's not valuable for them right now. How do we do that? And then also, you know, really, really important for us, how do we deliver a far improved customer passenger experience? What do the people of South Yorkshire want? Yeah, they want punctuality and reliability, but what else can we do? So again, I think in summary, you know, that's literally a very, very quick whistle stop tour. I think really positively, the eighteenth of March, the decision has been taken. We are now, you know, in the whole planning stage, starting to move forward. You know, more than happy to provide more context as we go through that. But hopefully, that gives you a flavour of where we're at. Thank you for your time.
So there will be an opportunity to ask questions broadly about, broadly and specifically on public transport when we do the breakout groups. But if there are any questions now for Ian on the franchising aspect, will you be okay to answer those?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if there are anything on those, trust me, you will get an opportunity to talk around around the tables on public transport. So if there are any questions that you have on the franchising aspects that have been covered. Yeah, so Tom.
Brilliant. If it's okay, I'll just make a point. Really, Ian, thanks very much for coming. People who came in late, I'm Tom Hunt with a local councillor here. I'm really pleased to be part of the MCA board that took the decision in March to bring our buses back under public control. And just to kind of really spell it out in simple terms, what this means is that the MCA, the mayor, the public has then the ability to be in control of routes, fares and timetables so that we get the service that the public need rather than the one that the bus companies provide to us. For forty years since privatisation in the nineteen eighties, we've had to put up with services that have been done to us, not for us. And this is a chance to reverse that. So as Ian set out, there'll now be work over the next couple of years to look at the network, work out where are people trying to get to from A to B? And then how can the services be designed to support the needs of our communities? This is a big step forward. In the nineteen eighties, buses were deregulated everywhere apart from London because the bus system there was deemed to be so important that they weren't prepared to risk it. Everywhere else has had to suffer with it for forty years. This has just taken back control of our buses. The tram came back under public control in March twenty twenty four. And what we can now move towards is integrating our bus and tram system in the way that frankly, if you go to any major European city, you would expect to be able to just hop on seamlessly between bus and tram without having to buy different tickets. I came here tonight and I landed here from the city centre. I went up to West Street thinking I'm cutting it a bit fine, but it's all right. I'll be able to get the ninety five to come up to South Road. I waited ten minutes. And for people who remember when the ninety five used to run every ten minutes, you know, you should just be able to turn up like you do in London and not really have to check a timetable because the bus will come along at some point. I waited ten minutes and then I thought I'm going to be late and I had to bail out and get a taxi. Too many people have to do that, but for those people who can't afford to get a taxi, they got to put up with a crap bus, excuse my French in the church. They got to put up with a rubbish bus service and it's not good enough. And so this is a big step forward to improve our public transport for the long term. And I think, you know, pay tribute to the work of the MCA and everyone who took part in the consultation because I tell you, there are many consultations. They're getting eighty seven percent resounding, yes, please, we really want this. So thank you for all giving us the ammunition to be able to say we're going to take our buses back under public control. It will happen. We'll do it together over the next couple of years and we can improve the public transport here to get the buses that we deserve. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Tom. Is there is there a question on on bus franchising? Thank you. Yep. I forgot to mention that we'll have someone who'll be moving around the room and will hand you an ability to. Has everyone can hear you?
Can you hear me now?
We can certainly hear you.
You were saying about for South Yorkshire being the SimCA. Now, if I wanted the bus to go into Chesterfield or in Derbyshire, will we still be able to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the point I was making to us, I think it's going cross boundary.
Yes.
They will be part of this scheme. Again, how we work with that, yeah, you know, the details are always there, but absolutely. So again, yeah, we want to ensure that connectivity absolutely remains and people aren't deterred from doing so. So yeah, no, to the south, to the west completely, yes.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Right, thank you very much. Your name for the record. So Ronnie with us. Thank you, Ronnie. Okay, another question about bus franchising.
I just wondered, is there a chance of an improvement in the ninety five before two thousand and twenty seven?
I think it's probably a fair question. Yeah.
It is absolutely, you know, a fair question. I think where we are right now, we're looking at what does that transitional period look like? Because again, you know, we have, you know, two plus years until we get to that first tranche where it becomes under our ownership. So I think one of the immediate steps now, you know, for the team at the MCA is to understand what does that interim period look like? How do we work with existing commercial operators to ensure that we've got services that are getting to the point where we need them to be? So, you know, I certainly can't sit here right now and say, yes, we guarantee we can do that by X date. But absolutely, looking at looking at the entire network, do a complete review all the way through. It's going to be one of the key pieces to work over the course of the next few months. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ian. So I've had two more people indicate. I've got Bernard here and the lady over there in the third row back. And the gentleman at the back. Three people. Right. And I think that might be it.
Thank you. Okay. Bernard? Oh, sorry. Diane Leek. I just wanted to know, I'm not sure whether this is a right question, but will this look at linking better with trains, maybe in the future of actually making better access? Because it's quite difficult, especially in Sheffield.
Thank you. Absolutely. So one of the key priorities is how do we get multimodal integration? So, you know, with train, with bus, with tram, with active travel. So one hundred percent, that is absolutely one of the key drivers behind this. You know, we haven't been able to do it historically, but yeah, that is a very, very much important part of it.
Bernard next?
Yes, thank you for being here. What is the overall thought about supporting local communities like Walkley and Crooks and Upper Thorpe? Because it seems to me that when we look at the bus structure, route structure, it's all going into the city as it were. And we know full well that streets like high streets like Walkley are suffering because of lack of footfall. I know, and I also know full well there are people in the surrounding communities where their ability is not good, that they can no longer visit their their high street. Is this being factored in into the way the routes are being planned under the new franchising scheme?
So in a nutshell, absolutely, yes, it will. I think, you know, what we're looking at, we're not looking at this at the network and just doing a whole review as a commercial operator would do. So again, you know, where is our responsibility to, you know, that societies actually find it difficult to travel, find it difficult to get the connections that they need. So absolutely, as part of that whole review, yeah, that will be quite high up on the agenda. So yes, in a nutshell, it will be featured.
Right. So Said.
Yeah, just two things. First, really thank you for taking the time and the effort to be here. But more importantly, for taking the consultation. Because I think it's key that people are given the opportunity to voice and to be included. And it quite clearly demonstrates that you've gone to different places to engage. I was just looking at some of the objectives that you had and they were sort of categorised from sort of one till, I think, nine or ten. I think vulnerable, those that are most vulnerable was towards supporting the most vulnerable was number nine. It's an area of concern for me because I think, I don't know whether that's done in a sort of a way of prioritising, but I think that category is really a key category that needs to be included and involved, but more importantly, you know, supported for this. So I just wanted to kind of ask the question whether that was done in a strategic way. And if not, can we, if it is, then we need to sort of put that priority a bit further up the list.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, to reassure you, that wasn't done in a particularly ranked order, far from it. And again, you know, a lot of the conversations already that are taking place is, you know, what is our vulnerability? How do we start to address that? And again, I think what will be really good as we start to move through, you know, the next stage of moving to consultation, we start to have those conversations with the communities that we serve as well. And we get a real understanding of actually, you know, what we think is needed, what we need to build into the programme and build into that moving forward. So absolutely, it's certainly not ranked as eighth, ninth on the list, far from it, to reassure you in that respect. Thank you.
That's wonderful. So I'd like to be able to move on, but one more question?
A simple, simple quick question. Is there any, are you considering not just evening services but like night buses in terms of what you're proposing and what you'd like to do? Because I feel like the, you know, the untapped potential of the night time economy is really, really held back by people. Just not being able to like literally get taxis, let alone buses, go back so that don't come into town. Or just to go around between different places in Sheffield. Is that something that you're looking at and prioritising in a way?
Absolutely fair question. I think where we are right now, we are literally just starting the network review. You know, that will continue now, certainly where we get to.
You know, that will continue now, certainly when we get to the first tranche of, you know, what is going to be franchised. I think, you know, absolutely, I think we recognise it is, it is a need. I think, you know, what we'll have to do is understand, okay, what can we do in that first phase? And we're also, I'll be honest, really conscious that we don't want to do too much change in one go. You know, we've got to do the changes, they've got to be delivered correctly, it has to be delivering the services that we need. But absolutely, you know, what we want to look at is, you know, not just, you know, what do you do around night services? How do we extend existing services, you know, times of operation, what do weekends, et cetera? So it will all fall into that whole review process. But again, you know, I'd almost come back to my earlier point that, you know, that sort of feedback is invaluable for us as we start to go through these conversations, this, you know, this dialogue and this review process, yeah.
Thank you. And your name for the record, if you don't mind.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Okay, I've, one person, we've put the hand up, Henry.
Very quick one. Young people in Barnsley have been fortunate enough to benefit from a trial where there's free bus travel for the under 18s at the moment. Are there any plans to extend that trial to the residents of Sheffield or build it into the franchising model?
So first point, the trial in Barnsley starts later this summer. I think, you know, absolutely, you know, the aspiration is see how that trial goes, how well does it work? And absolutely, yeah, what we'd want to be able to do is look at how can we extend that trial if it is successful moving forwards? You know, one of the big, big focuses, as I said, is driving patronage, that's driving patronage, you know, across every demographic. You know, it's like that market is absolutely critical for us as well. So right here, right now, I can't say, yes, that's what we'll do. But yeah, 100%, that is very, very much very wish to get to and it's on the radar, post the trial in Barnsley. Thank you.
Yeah, so the question, the question, if you didn't catch it, was about the impact on pensioners, potential impact on pensioners by having funding for younger people.
The intention would be, you know, any schemes run in parallel. You know, we believe that, you know, slightly the young person scheme has real value, will generate significant extra passengers, a number of journeys. But again, you know, part of the remit then also is, you know, slightly the elderly, slightly, you know, yeah, those passengers. Again, how do we grow that market as well? So certainly what we're not looking to do is reduce that down. Again, we want to grow that market, just like we want to grow the, you know, the under 18s as well. So, no. Thank you.
All right, right, thank you, thank you, Ian. Yes, one tiny question, go, go on, Angela.
Not complicated at all. Thank you for, sorry, I missed the beginning because I was late. I wonder whether it is important to ask all these questions about different categories of people? Because for example, I also would like to know why couldn't we, for elderly people that have a free bus pass, could they take the bus earlier than they do? So many times I am at the bus stop early in the morning and people are waiting, you know, for the time because they have an appointment at the hospital and are worried about being late. So that would be helpful, but also there are other categories of people. For example, asylum seekers in the first six months in the country, they have absolutely no money. And they have, sometimes they're poor, in the middle of nowhere and getting on transport is really expensive. So if we could live, you know, have free bus passes for six months for asylum seekers, that would make their journeys, you know, to go to the home office or to go to the solicitors a lot easier and not too expensive.
So, so the interesting part of that for me was, and it's dawning on me, that there are opportunities to pilot things here. You know, Henry mentioned about the Barnsley scheme. So maybe a pilot for early use of buses. It's possibly a national standard, 9.30 in the morning. But I was wondering whether there's potential there to pilot a few interesting different ideas now we've got on to the franchising scheme?
I think it's a very, very valid question. And again, I think, you know, what I would always go back to is, you know, we've not had this opportunity to trial these sort of, you know, initiatives previously. Once we take total control back, absolutely, we then have that ability, we have that flexibility. We're not dependent on incumbent commercial operators. And again, you know, I think, you know, the restrictions at times absolutely is something that, you know, we will take, we will review. And again, to me, it all ultimately comes back to having a service that is fit for purpose and generating additional trips, additional passengers. And again, you know, we need to look at every which we can do that and how do we get people to, you know, have faith and actually believe in the bus service that we operate throughout South Yorkshire, so yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ian. So I'm going to draw that to a close at the moment, so we're able to then move on to, thank you very much, Ian.
Thank you.
So we move on to group discussions now where we can flesh out some of the things that have actually started to emerge. So one of the things that I noticed was mentioned was about disability. I've come up already. Now, unfortunately, we were due to have a table on disability in public transport, but no one was available from any of the organisations to be able to be on that table. So, but that doesn't mean that disability and access to buses should be missed out. It can be drawn up on the, one of the three tables that we're actually going to move on to do. So the topics for discussion tonight are table one, and I think we'll probably fit everybody, everyone will have their choice of which table to go to. So table one is over there on that side of the room. What are your thoughts on public transport in your ward now? And we're using the term ward because there are four wards that make up Central Act. We have Bromhill and Sherravale, we have Walkley, where we are now, we have Hillsborough and we have City Ward. So those four areas. So thoughts on public transport right now, you know, what's happening and what do you want to see changed? Now, public transport in the future is table two. So what are the big changes that you'd like to see in the future? That's table two behind table one. Table three is investment in public transport. And how are we going to increase our investment in public transport? Because we know we need to put more money into this. Now, one of the things that has been raised has been an employer's workplace parking levy, which is used in cities such as Nottingham. Now, that is one example of an investment, but there may be others. So that third table is in what's called the Thackeray Room. So beyond the coffee and tea is a room called the Thackeray Room. And so if you can gather around there, if you're interested in how we're going to increase our investment. Okay. Webcast is going to be paused during this period so we can, you know, frank discussions between ourselves. I'm going to give about 40 minutes to this so we can get some in-depth discussions going. And then what we will do is we'll reconvene in here. And each of those tables will give some feedback on what they've found out and what we've been talking about. There'll be someone on that table to take notes. Those notes will come back in here, but they will also go to our public transport partners. So they will go to SIMCA and they'll go to the Transport Committee in Sheffield, part of Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee. They'll go there to the offices there as direct feedback from this meeting. Okay, any questions? Yes, Diane? Of course, that's, that's a good point. Yes, you can move around, you know, if you feel, you know, you've made a point or you want to move on to another one, please do. Yes, do that. Get yourself a coffee or tea as well when you move on to your chosen tables. Go and do that now and, and then you're all kitted out. Okay, are we all right for that? Okay, so in about 40 minutes, which I make around 20 past, half past seven, I'll reconvene. Thank you, folks. That is not going to just disappear into the ether. That information that we've gathered there is going to be written up and it's going to go to, for example, SIMCA. So it'll be coming your direction, Nathan, to be disseminated. We've also got the TRC committee that it should be going to in Sheffield, Transport, Regeneration, Climate. And I think it also goes to some of our other stakeholders such as Disability Sheffield, if we can make that happen, Adil, and Better Buses Sheffield as well, the campaign group, and maybe others, we'll have a think about that one. So thank you for that. Moving on to item nine now, so it's public questions and petitions. So we've had a number of people supply us with public questions. There was one lady who supplied us with two questions to which she wants a written response and has supplied an email for that. So that will be going to her. But basically, for the, for the sense of transparency in the room, the questions were, has connecting people to the countryside been considered as an objective? This is in terms of public transport. For example, the Sunday service 6162 to Bradfield has been discontinued. It's taking away a quick way to access the wonderful countryside around Sheffield. So that is that one. The second question from this lady was, with regards to objective nine, considering the needs of the vulnerable, are you considering a dial-a-bus scheme as the streets of, for example, Walkley are steep and particularly hazardous in winter? Vulnerable people unable to reach bus stops, a home pickup will be a way to keep them connected to the local community. So make the quick answer on that, Sir Nathan, could you possibly do that? If someone can supply Nathan with a, with a, with a microphone.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, everybody, Nathan Broadhead, South Yorkshire MCA. Ian, who you saw the presentation from, is part of our Bus Reform Team, so he's come to talk to you about franchising. I look after the current network as best as we can within the commercial world that the operator's controls. So I pay them to run bus services where they're not prepared to run them. And I look after that, that network as best as we can with the challenges that brings for all of you as well as us, which is why we've come forward with franchising. So specifically for those questions, Chair, is in terms of the countryside, it is an important factor, health and wellbeing. You can look at our mayor, so my mayor's, your mayor as well in terms of Oliver, his manifesto, things in terms of health and access and out the countryside and those aspects will be part of that. We fund a large number of those bus services out there. I fully fund 6162 now. I fully fund a large number of other services out into, into those, into those rural areas. They are important, they do employ people, people do live out there. So it's finding that best solution. As Ian said earlier on, we can't give you an answer yet. That needs to come through, we need to have these meetings, we need to have that public understanding and decisions will have to be made. But I'm already funding a large amount of that, so this question is, it is important, I'm already funding that already. Yes, there's challenges, but there's challenges with money at the moment in terms of budget because a large amount of the network is controlled by the operator. In terms of the second question, sorry, Chair, can you remind me? Yeah, so I think as part of this, we will provide some feedback, of course. We already fund dial-a-bus services with Chequemans Transport, so some people can use that. That gives people our test of shops, gives it to them into the town centre. And people probably need to know more about that. We're doing a piece of work promoting that at the moment, making sure communities can access those services. There is some challenges with that, they have lost volunteers, so a large amount of that, those community operators rely on volunteers. Sheffield used to have 28 volunteers before Covid, they now have five. So we are doing, looking at promoting that, trying to get them more volunteers to help with that solution so they can do those services. But to go back to the councillor's previous point, demand responsive transport is another solution. So that is being looked at. Will it form part of franchising? That decision is not based, but DRT itself is being looked at. So that will be more of an Uber-style taxi service but using a, using a bus. So that may bring benefits. There will be discussions around connectivity into the tram network, into local bus network, of course, so we can build on all of that.
Brilliant, thank you very much. This lady has asked for a written response, so we've got the emails here. If you can hand them on, we'll hand them on. Brilliant, thank you, thank you very much. We've had a note from someone who hasn't, who hasn't been able to get to the meeting, this is interesting. This is a lady who would like to raise the issue of changes to the 31 bus route in Walkley. She's part of a group of people who would like to discuss it at the meeting, but there's no bus to get them here. They are elderly and having to use taxis to get about, which is expensive. So another really good point. So you can get back to her on that, Adil, we've got a telephone number. A question in, before I move on to the last bit. Can consideration be given to not all information being online information? So, again, you know, we can, we can put that forward to yourselves. There's a telephone number, but if you want to supply an email, get a written response to that. No, we will have a word. Yeah, I think, I mean, it's not necessarily that they're not online, it's just they want to make sure that perhaps other people who aren't online are allowed access to that information. Yes, okay, we will deal with that one. And I think the final, I've got two more. So this is a lady here who may still be here, it's Elaine. Yeah, so Elaine, do you want to, do you want to give us your question? You, you put, you put yes, but I'm happy to read it out. How long after the dog trial on trams will a decision be made? Yeah? Thanks, Tom.
I'm not sure if everyone heard the question, it was how long after the trial about letting dogs on trams would a decision be made? The decision has been made and dogs will be allowed on trams. It was, I think, the biggest consultation response, I'm looking at MCA colleagues here, that the, even bigger than bus franchising, it turns out people like dogs on trams more than bringing buses back under public control. So that is happening. And as of now, you can take your dog on the tram. Yeah, so, no, it was a overwhelming response and an overwhelming number of people who have said we would like that. And we, and the mayor have listened. And that is one of the benefits frankly of bringing public transport back under public control. Because you can try things, you can ask people what they want, and when the people say that's what we want, you can actually then make a decision.
Thank, thanks, Tom, yeah. So being more responsive is one of the benefits of this. So finally, so we've had a news of petition on the safety of Burgoyne Road and speeding traffic, calling for an effective scheme to physically slow traffic. Now, we've got various options we can do with petitions. We don't get petitions here, but we are allowed to take them. And so there are various directions this can go, which I think, are you able to tell us, Claire? As the expert on democracy here.
Okay, thank you, Bernard Little, for handing in your petition. I know that you're going to leave that with Democratic Services tonight, so thank you for that. I understand there's about four to four responses on the, on the petition. If you'd like to sort of explain what the petition is about before I explain what we can do with that petition afterwards, is that okay?
Yeah, thanks, thank you. Yes, I went out last night and actually did, did the petition on Burgoyne Road. And I got a fantastic response, virtually 100% on, on the road said that the traffic is dangerous. There is a sort of bit of personal involvement here in that my grandson is four, he's starting school at Walkley and he lives on Burgoyne Road, so there is concern about the speed of traffic. So there is concern about the speed of traffic on that road. So the petition reads, we, the undersigned, are concerned at the dangerously high speed of vehicles driving up and down Burgoyne Road in Walkley. The road, the, the road is used by children at nurseries and at St Mary's and Walkley Primary Schools. There are also elderly residents who use, use that area. So we're, we're calling on the Central Local Area Committee to provide, one, provide an effective scheme to physically slow the traffic used in Burgoyne Road. Two, fully consult local residents on future proposals. Three, produce a timetable of action. I collected 44 signatures last night in under about hour and a half. There are 16, in addition, there are 16 online signatures to that. So that was just a few hours really in London. So there is definitely a need for a reduction in speed on that road. Somebody, somebody's cat had been run over last year because of a speeding car and I believe it's quite, you know, it happens more often than we need to. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Bernard. I know road safety is quite a large issue. It's one of the largest things in my inbox.
Yeah, so, so just what, if it's okay just to say that if we, if you leave that with us tonight, it will go on to the petition log that's published on the, on the website to show that it's been taken and submitted to the council. And I would suggest that maybe the quickest response to get to you would be via Adil to get to the officers that would look at the research and figures that we've already would be holding or look further into them. And then you will get a written response from that if you're in agreement with that. That would be the quickest route for you to get a response to your petition.
I've had two people indicate that they want to speak, so there's Laura and there's a lady on the, on the bike road there. So if you want to speak. We've got one other item of business, you see, so we need to move on. Oh. So do you want to speak on this issue of Burgoyne Road? Right, so Laura, can you respond on this? And then if you don't mind, you come second.
Brilliant, thank you. And thank you, Bernard, for bringing that petition. As Walkley councillors, we're aware of some concerns over Burgoyne Road and have in recent months met with the head teacher and spoken with parents at the school. So it's something we're on. From next week, there'll be a 20 mile per hour limit coming in across much of Walkley and this will really help. Data shows that it does make a difference bringing in a, a speed limit in this way. I think because it's not just one road, it's a big area, hopefully it really will help change behaviour and, you know, it's something that should be really positive for the ward. And but yeah, we do hear that concern and we are speaking with residents in the schools and it's something that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Laura and, and Lady back here. Are you okay to, to, to speak?
I just wanted to know whether people are aware of the Better Buses for South Yorkshire movement, which is sort of run under the We Own It organisation, which is obviously, there's a link online, and they're pretty good at campaigning and also educating the public, et cetera, on what's happening. And there is an email address, which is bettabusesforsy@gmail.com.
So thank, thank you very much. We were in touch with Sam Wakelin from Better Buses, but he wasn't able to be here tonight. Okay. So thank you for reminding us about that, though. Did you get the name?
Not again.
Okay. Do you mind if we have your name for the record? Thank you very much. Thanks, Francesca. So last item of the evening is minutes of the previous meeting, which have been circulated round to councillors. Can members of the committee approve as an accurate record the minutes of the previous meeting which were held on the 24th, 25th of February 2025? And we'll do that by show of hands. Again, very, very finally, the next meeting of the Central Local Area Committee will be held on Wednesday, the 25th of June in City Ward, and we're looking for a venue in City Ward at the moment. And we were going to be sharing further details in due course. Thank you. And thank you for your attention this evening.